There we go. Good evening and welcome. I'm Chris Ray, and with me this evening is Deputy Council President Zach Hall and Councilmember Barb De Michele. I'm going to call the May 9, 2023 City Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee to order. This evening, we have one item on our, or two items on our agenda. First is public comment. And then we have agenda item ID 1318, the 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan. So the first order of business tonight is public comment. There will be multiple public comments this evening. There will be a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question period on tonight's agenda item. Members of the public may address the council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called first. If you join us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you are on the phone, plus star three. If you joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right corner. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I'll ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. I'm going to wait for a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their hand. City Clerk?
Chair Ray, we, we have no virtual attendees at this time.
Okay. Anybody in the room like to speak? Please, join us.
Hi, my name's Connie March. I live on Squawk Mountain. And I guess the first thing is to notice how many people are in the room and how many people are online watching you discuss about raising taxes. And then, again, last night, it just was last night, right? How many people were in the room and were listening when you were talking about raising taxes? And then there was the conversation about when is the public going to be brought in to the conversation about raising taxes? And the answer was, well, when we figure out what exactly it is we want to do. And then we'll go out to the public with exactly what we've decided they want. And I see this as a fatal flaw because you are most likely to be wrong if you don't incorporate people into what you want initially, they want initially, because you are guessing as to actually what is preferred. And so when I hear, well, we're just going to come back with this one item, when I think it was almost five years ago, we were promised that we would get, always get three choices when these decisions were being made, and one of them would be nothing, and then the other two would be reasonable options that one could pick and choose from as an educated community. And so I, I resist doing one, and I sort of insist that there is more, but I also realize that by insisting on a better public process, then I'm actually aiding in the potential passing of taxes, which I'm generally not a huge fan of. So it's hard for me to stand up here and tell you how to do it better when I don't know that I want you to. So I'm somewhere in between rah rah, you just keep going because that'll help you lose. And, you know, please, do it right from the get-go because then we can have a mutually beneficial community instead of a city telling the community what it thinks the community wants without too much conversation. And so I'm gathering the whole ball, and you guys are being told to talk about a corner of the whole ball, and you're being told that it's going to be splintered out for some time. And I, as a, if I were a council member, I would start chafing at that, too, because it needs to be blended from the get-go, even if it is more confusing. Because making decisions one little bit at a time, you know, it's like cooking one small ingredient at a time. Anyway, there you go. I think you get the picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to comment tonight? Okay. No? Anyone online?
We have one virtual attendee.
Is anybody online interested in making comment this evening?
Sorry. If you are online and you wish to make a comment, would you please raise your virtual hand?
Okay. Question.
I do not see a virtual hand raised at this time.
Okay. Sounds like, no. Well, thank you. Appreciate the, the comments. Public comment is an important part of our process, and we do take your comments seriously. I'm going to move on to the next agenda item, which is approval of the minutes. Any, any discussion?
I'm moved we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
All right. All in favor of accepting minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Minutes have been accepted. All right. We're going to move on to our first and only agenda item for this evening, which is ID 1318, the 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan. And Andrea Schneider, our Deputy City Administrator, is going to lead a cast of presenters, it looks like. So Andrea, thank you.
Good evening. There we go. It's a bang. That's a good sign. Hi, I'm Andrea Schneider. I'm the Deputy City Administrator. With me here tonight is Robert Hamud. This is the wrong presentation. Hold on. This is the, the issue with doing multiple presentations throughout this week and next is sometimes that means having too many open. So sorry about that. Okay. There we go. Let me try that again. Good evening. Again, my name is Andrea Schneider. With me here is not Suzy Munsell, the Budget Manager, but in fact, Robert Hamud, our CFO. He will be joining in the presentation in a little bit. And we are here to talk about the proposed 2024 to 2029 CIP. This is the first of the City Council Committee meetings on the CIP. And mobility and infrastructure is specifically assigned, according to council rules and procedure, sewer, water, and transportation-type projects within the CIP. So those will be the projects we'll be discussing tonight. Here's a bit of a preview in terms of our agenda. We will talk about the direction needed from you all tonight. We'll give a little bit of background on the CIP process and how we got here today. Then we'll go over, just a brief overview of the draft CIP, especially as it pertains to those three infrastructure types. And then we're going to have a focus on the proposed TBD, Transportation Benefit District Sales Tax, and associated projects to that potential new revenue source. And then we are very eager to hear council's feedback on those items. So direction needed in terms of tonight, and this is a question that we'll be asking all of the City Council Committees throughout the process, is does the proposed CIP seem to respond to the council goals and outcomes for this process so far? If not, what can we improve? And then specifically for this council, for this committee, the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, is the committee supportive of a councilmatic 0.1% Transportation Benefit District Sales Tax? And if so, is the committee supportive of the projects to be funded by the new revenue stream that are proposed within the CIP? And that includes the Intelligent Transportation Systems projects, the Northwest Mammoth Non-Motorized improvements? Or should the city consider other unfunded projects instead? So first, let's go into a little bit of background about how we got here. There have been many changes since the last CIP. The city does an update to the CIP every two years, and a couple of things have changed since the last two years. First, we formed the Capital Finance Community Task Force, and they met and provided many recommendations. Those recommendations to the full report are linked in your packet, the materials tonight. But briefly, they recommended that the city do more to invest in infrastructure, and it was their conclusion that the city does not have enough existing revenues to pay for the level of infrastructure investments that we should be making. So they suggested the city pursue new revenue tools in order to make those investments. They also recommended that mobility and transportation was the first priority, meaning that's something that we should invest in first, ahead of the other infrastructure types. And in order to do that, invest in more transportation projects, they recommended a TBD sales tax to fund that infrastructure. The task force also said that parks and trails and facilities were also really important, but again, that transportation and mobility were number one. Also, in the past two years, the city has looked at adopting new and improved criteria. So you may recall, we discussed this at the City Council Retreat in January. The administration proposed new criteria that are, that were to be used to vet projects and evaluate projects going into the CIP. And we've gone through a process with the boards and commissions, with four of the boards, to refine that criteria. We'll be talking more about that tonight. But big, big change in the CIP, and we've also moved to a yellow, I'm sorry, a red, yellow, and green rating. Before, we had criteria that we would use for the CIP, and it would be more of a check the box, yes, no, does this meet an environmental criteria, yes or no? We wanted to raise the bar this year in terms of evaluating our projects and understanding, how beneficial is this according to the, is this project according to those criteria? So those are some of the big changes since last time. I'm going to turn it over to our CFO, Robert Hamud, to talk about the City Council goals that you established in your January retreat. Robert?
Thank you, Andrea. Good evening. Good to see you again.
Robert, before you leap in, so the PowerPoint that's in the packet is slightly different than what we're looking at here? I know this because it has five boxes instead of four.
Ah, you are right.
No.
This is multiple versions, but what I can do is go to the version that's available online. Sorry, I shared an earlier.
Oh, and I'm looking at the wrong slide.
Are you?
Yeah. There's umbrella goals, and then there's the City Council Goals goal.
Okay, okay, okay. Good.
We're good.
So we were good. All right.
Yeah. Sorry to put you down a rabbit hole.
That's okay. We're going to get there together tonight. It's going to be okay. All right. Let's get back to presentation mode. Here we are. I think all on the same page?
Yeah, we need, we are here. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So with the umbrella goals, we started the CIP wanting to integrate as much as we can, both feedback from the council, integrating the council goals, but also feedback from the community. And again, we did have the board summit, the advisory boards, and commissions give us feedback on the red, yellow, green criteria, and what worked and what didn't work. And we had a lot of discussion internally when we were waiting these projects. So the project list that is attached tonight, there are a lot of thought went into it, a lot of thought went into the waiting. How do we wait it? There's a lot of challenges internally, a lot of discussions internally. So this is weeks and weeks of work, very strong product that you see is, everything was carefully evaluated. Every project you see was carefully evaluated for each criteria. How does it fit? How does it fit our goals? How does it fit each, each line? And where it is? And so tonight, again, you're going to see the integration and the culmination of this work with looking at those main goals that we started this process out, which is first, realigning the Capital Improvement Plan with community aspirations for the city as provided and adopted plans. So again, we looked at, in this case, for example, the transportation plan, the utilities plans, anything else that, that fit under master plans that were already adopted, that was part of it, in addition to the feedback and any updates that happened. And then again, the next one, providing a transparent CIP update process that allowed for groups and individuals to engage in the process. This is where the boards and commissions came in, but also staff. We actually had an internal group of department heads and leadership team evaluate all the projects in the city. And so, for example, we had, you know, participation from all our department heads, all of our departments, in looking at other, the other projects in the other departments. So we had cross-departmental interactions on this. We had a lot of touchpoints within the city, as well as having the advisory boards and commissions take a look at the criteria. And so inside the city, we vetted the projects, we vetted the goals, we looked at the red, yellow, green. How does this fit with council? How does this fit with equity, sustainability? And again, this was a very robust and transparent process, as much as we could. The next one, reforming project planning and delivering for improved efficiency, equity, consistency, and predictability. So again, what is, what does a project do? How is it delivered? How can we deliver it in a timely manner? How does it fit within the 24 to 29 CIP? Some projects, for example, we moved out because we looked at them and we said, looking at our project schedule, the timeline of the resources available, we wouldn't be able to do it within the timeline. So there are some community projects, some CIP projects, that are actually moved out into the future years section that you have in the budget, the CIP budget document. So addressing current laws and best practices. So again, this is making sure there's a lot of law changes, and especially with the departments under M and I, you look at a lot of the utilities, the stormwater, transportation, there's a lot there. And so how do these projects address those? And again, weighing it, evaluating it, and then internally presenting this information internally, and now to the council as far as what goals, you know, what are we trying to achieve with these projects? How do they fit into any laws, any requirements that we have to get fulfilled? So the specific CIP goals, and projects have to have a clear path to inclusion in the CIP. And this is again, kind of like you hear about who, what, when, where, why, and how. We did this with all of our projects. We had descriptions, we had explanations. We also had, you know, identify the resources available, identify the project plan, the timeline. And we did this for each and every project that's in the CIP. So again, how are those processes and priorities clearly communicated with the City Council, the community? Again, you have the packet. We already released the CIP document, which again, is a work in progress until the CIP is finally adopted, then we'll update it based on any project changes and any prioritization changes. We'll update the document after it's, the CIP is ratified and approved by council, by making sure at all times and all changes are completely conveyed. So during this process, if there are changes with the deliberations over the next few weeks, convey those updates, convey those, those changes, if any, in the, in the document and the CIP, as you, you have outlined. But also, the projects have accountable path towards execution or completion. This is something that we really talked about a lot internally, making sure we have the resources. I know Public Works came to council earlier this year with an organization plan for more engineering and more resources to execute more projects. And so this is kind of a product of that. It's with the new resources, what can we accomplish with the resources that we have in the city over this next six-year period that we're looking at with the CIP? And how do we hold those accountable? And again, that's what I'm saying, when I mentioned before, there's certain projects that we determined as a group, citywide, not just in this committee, that those projects couldn't be executed within that six-year timeframe, so we put those ones out, for example. And again, equity. And equity is one that we've talked about quite a bit. I had the pleasure of attending the Equity Board meeting last week with Andrea and getting some good feedback. This is something that we really talked about internally a lot. I think, at least in my opinion, there's no right answer in equity. So looking at the criteria, the way we weighted it in the document, and we had very robust discussions on certain projects internally about, is this equitable for the community? Is this equitable? Is this project going to impact a disproportionate group? For example, we have some water connections in areas that are still septic, for example. That's bringing them to the city system. Our pavement management plan, where we're trying to get to as many neighborhoods as possible, for example, sidewalk, the concrete maintenance plan as well. So looking at those projects, looking at parks or in other, in other committees, for example, looking at parks, how are they inclusive? How are they maintaining access? Some of our mobility projects, for example, and transportation, how does that fit into equity? And those are things that we, we talked about. I think it's always something where we'll have lessons learned this year, and we learned a lot during this process about what is equitable and how do we apply it to these measures? And then clearly define funding strategies. That's always the multimillion-dollar question when we go in front of any council at any time. What is our funding strategy? We have a lot of projects and a lot of need in this community, especially in the transportation, the utility side, and what is the funding sources or funding options that we're going to pay for in the future? So again, we had a lot of internal discussions about it. There's going to be a lot of ongoing discussions, of course, with this group and later tonight on those priorities and those options for funding as well. And I'll turn it back over to Andrea.
Thank you, Robert. So process. Let's talk about how, how we've gotten here today, where we're going. So as I said earlier, we worked with the boards in February to help further refine the criteria that we initially proposed to you in January. We got for board feedback on how the draft CIP meets the criteria. So we, we went to the Equity Board, the Transportation Advisory Board, and the Park Board. So far, we're meeting with the Environmental Board tomorrow to get their feedback on how we've applied those criteria, if they have any changes that they would recommend, and to take that feedback and bring that back to you. So in your packet tonight, there is the compiled feedback from the board summit that we held with those four boards back in February. That's an attachment in your packet. Also in your packet, in the memo, is a summary of the feedback we received from the boards since, since we released the draft CIP. So you can see all of that summarized for you there. Now we're in the stage of talking to council committees, starting this evening, of reviewing the sections of the CIP. We're going to come back together in June with the Committee of the Whole to discuss the entire CIP, and then we'll look towards council adoption. One of the key things I wanted to mention was that while we hope for council adoption by July 1, because there is a state mandate for the Transportation Improvement Plan, which is a component of the Capital Improvement Plan, there's a state requirement for the TIP to be adopted by July 1. We're hoping for the, the entire CIP adoption by July 1, but that does not mean the adoption of the TBD sales tax we're talking about this evening. What we're hoping to hear is, is this a concept we should continue to explore? Is council comfortable with that? And if council is comfortable with that, then we want to move forward, take the rest of the year, and have community engagement, additional meetings and discussions about that Transportation Benefit District Sales Tax. So we're not asking council to adopt a tax when council approves the CIP. We're just asking council, is this a concept that we should continue to discuss, and we should start to discuss with the community? New criteria. We've been saying we've had new criteria. I'm just going to run over this quickly because I know we have a lot to do tonight. There is another attachment in your packet for this evening that further defines these criteria and that also talks about those red, yellow, green thresholds, and how we assigned those red, yellow, and green thresholds, and how they were defined. So I'll let you refer to that. Of, of these things, we've done some tweaking of the criteria we've used in the past considerably, and really, again, have raised the bar on how we define these criteria, the expectations of the projects that we have in order to meet these criteria. In addition, there are two new criteria, brand-new ones, that were not there before. One of those is equity, and the other one is longstanding commitment. That's how we've identified it. That last one, longstanding commitment, was something we heard from council in January that was really important to you. And we plan on coming back to you at that Committee of the Whole in June to look over that list of projects, because council said we wanted to see, we're going to know it when we see it. So we're going to bring that list of projects before you in June, so you can have a discussion and make sure that that list of projects, the right ones, are included, that apply to the longstanding commitment, that we have a chance to evaluate those. So that discussion is still coming, but I wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. Any questions so far on process, criteria, et cetera?
Deputy Council President Hall?
Yeah, thank you. Could you talk a little bit about board and commission feedback about those two criteria, the equity and the longstanding commitment? I think it was really helpful to read over that, but just for the sake of exploring it, if you could kind of go into that a little bit more.
Thank, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about that. Equity, we heard some of the similar concerns from our boards, especially the Equity Board on that equity criteria, as we heard from council in January, that we needed to define that a lot better. And as our CFO, Hamud, said, we really talked about it a lot more after we got that feedback. And so we were able to incorporate more of the concepts from the equity framework than we had in our initial proposal, to really ask more questions in terms of who is harmed? Has this been, is this project going to correct historic harm or, or disproportionate level of service for a certain population or certain neighborhood, for example? So we were able to flesh that out quite a bit and really incorporate more of the framework. So that was some of the feedback that we heard from the Equity Board on, on that criteria. And certainly, we heard similar feedback from the other boards as well. And we certainly incorporated that in our equity definition and how we applied that criteria to the projects in the proposed CIP. The longstanding commitment was really the thing that we heard a lot of critical feedback from many of our boards, that they thought that, of course, it was less defined than the other criteria. They were a little uncomfortable with longstanding criteria, longstanding commitment, because they, they were concerned that maybe the city had made a commitment to do a certain project in the past without thinking about equity. So there might be some projects that were committed to in the past that may not meet the equity goals. And they were concerned that it just didn't feel very transparent at that point. We had a conversation following up to make sure that they were aware that City Council was going to have this conversation about what fits the longstanding commitment in open public meetings, that it was going to be a public discussion, and to do it in the most transparent way possible. And they, they seemed to be a little bit comforted by that, that at least it would be a discussion that happens on camera. But they still just had concerns and wanted to make sure that council, on the one hand, they agreed that, yes, let's keep our promises that we make, and that's really important. But at the same time, let's also take the opportunity to reevaluate and make sure that those longstanding commitments still meet our current values that we hold today.
Good? I'll go ahead.
Thank you. That's great. And then part of the equity criteria also was the board not being sure if it should be its own criteria, or if it should live, and all the other ones. So can you talk a little bit, I think your first response was great, great context as well, but can you talk a little bit, too, about how the administration thought through that conundrum?
Yeah, that's, that's great. And this was also included, if you want to hear a more detailed response, this was also included in your packet. It was a memo that I wrote back to the, the boards, saying how we've incorporated their feedback. But the Equity Board was saying it shouldn't just be restricted to, to one criteria at one point in time. What we talked about is this, this CIP, any CIP, is really, first of all, one step out of many steps in how a concept becomes a project that we implement. It starts at that master planning phase and that visioning phase, then we talk about it when it comes to putting it into the CIP. Then the CIP becomes more real as we put it into a budget and assign budget to it, and the council adopts that budget, and then we go into the project adoption. Equity needs to be considered, just like many of our other values, environmental sustainability as well, in every step of that phase. And so, yes, equity needs to be considered throughout the concept-to-implementation phase. The other response that we had, so not only is this equity is going to be considered, not just one point in time when it gets into the CIP, but throughout that process. In addition, we were uncertain of how to ensure that equity was incorporated into community priority, for example, or legal mandate in addressing safety, life and safety concerns. Yes, it needs to be part of our daily practice and how we think, but we also wanted to be able to hold ourselves accountable and make sure that we're calling it out and really thinking about it and focusing on it. And we felt like we were concerned with our ability to hold ourselves accountable to those equity values without calling it out specifically and making sure that we are talking about it, that we're evaluating it, that we're able to provide well-thought-out responses in terms of how does this project meet our equity values. And so that's why we felt that it should still stand on its own at this point, because we wanted to make sure that it didn't get lost in the processes we tried to incorporate into the other criteria.
Anything else? Rock on.
Great. So overview of the 24-2029 CIP. In general, here are some of the themes. And it's, it's a big CIP. There's lots of projects. I'm definitely not going to go over every project with you today. I I wanted to focus more on themes. And overall, there's a lot more funding for maintenance programs than we've had in the past. We really paid attention to maintenance and replacement and planning for those costs. And if you recall, that's something that's mentioned specifically within the strategic plan as well, under the infrastructure goals, for us to really be thinking and planning for maintenance. So you'll see that throughout all of the infrastructure categories that we have. In addition, the CIP responds to feedback that we heard from you and from the Capital Finance Community Task Force, that we need to be making more investments in our infrastructure. And at the same time, that we need to make sure that this CIP is realistic. And so we tried to balance both of those things. And how do we balance both of those things? We have to ask for more resources. And so this CIP does contemplate new revenues for transportation, as we're going to talk about more this evening, but we also want to have that conversation about public safety-related facilities, which we began a little bit last night, and parks and trails. And so there's assumptions in the CIP right now, revenue assumptions built into the CIP for transportation. There are not revenue assumptions built in for facilities nor for parks and trails. What we do have is, you will see if you look at parks and trails, many of the projects in parks and trails are pushed out to later years, like 2026, 2027, 2028. And that's because that's when we anticipate having those conversations about an additional revenue source for parks. That's also in alignment with some of the task force recommendations of contemplating a new revenue for parks. So I'm going to go over quickly, again, themes within these different asset categories. Most of our conversation, I would like to focus on transportation this evening, because that's the biggest policy question, is whether this committee supports a TBD sales tax or supports exploring that further. So I'm not going to devote a lot of time to water or sewer tonight, but certainly, let's talk about those themes. If you have questions about them, have feedback, would love to hear that as well. So we have 17 water projects in the six-year plan. This is about on par with what we've had last year. Many of the projects within the water utility scored well on the replacement and maintenance criterion. Again, that theme that we've seen throughout the CIP is still within this category as well, a lot of maintenance and replacement. We've had neutral or yellow scores on community priority, but only because that priority and our thresholds are so high. So to get green in community priority, it means that that project must be suggested in more than one city plan. So most of our water projects are just referenced in the Water Systems Plan. So that yellow scoring doesn't necessarily mean bad, but we have such a high threshold for green. You're also going to see that theme throughout this conversation today, that we've really tried to raise the bar on ourselves. Next year also, just wanted to raise this, that we are contemplating a water rate study to help fund water infrastructure in the future. As you know, costs for construction have gone way up in the past couple of years, not contemplated by the water rate study that we completed in 2019. But also, the previous study did not forecast beyond 2025, and so we want to be able to plan and prepare appropriately for that. Any questions on water?
Really quickly, I just think it's interesting, the neutral score, because it was only in one system plan, but where else would it be other than one plan? I mean, it's kind of a self-limiting criteria.
Yeah. Other infrastructure projects, for example, might be referenced in the Issaquah Climate Action Plan, or, you know, mobility projects might be referenced in a couple of different plans, including ICAP, for example. So we do have some projects that scored green because they were just cross-referenced in so many places, but water, unfortunately, did not meet that threshold. And so, again, part of this is, we have these new criteria, we have these thresholds, are we having the right approach? Should we be thinking of it in this way? And I welcome feedback that you may have.
Yeah, no, really good point. I mean, the hard thing is, you want to build criteria, but then you want to have an evaluation model that makes sense and reflects our reality. So, you know, if you run the model and you don't get the results you want, then there's either something wrong with your data or something wrong with your model. So either fix the data or you fix the model. So, I mean, let's move forward and see where we end up, but I think it's, I mean, I love having criteria. I think that's really the way to go, but water's like really important, like every day to everybody. So that, you know, maintaining a water system is, you know, one of our primary missions in life.
And, yes. The other thing that we didn't talk so much about is, with the criteria that we have, we look at all the criteria in balance. One of those criteria is life safety. And so water score is much higher than other projects in life safety. And, you know, it's really an art in terms of applying these criteria versus a science, because sometimes something is more of a life safety concern than other things. Sometimes it's more of a life safety concern in certain years versus other years. So it's kind, it is more of an art in how we apply it, which is why we're asking for feedback, and are we approaching it the right way? Any other questions before we move on to sewer?
Let's move.
Great. So our sewer utility has nine projects within the six-year plan compared to five in the adopted plan. Many of these projects are part of the draft sewer master plan, so you might see that they score red in the criteria because they are not yet a part of an adopted city plan, but we anticipate bringing that sewer master plan before you later this year, and so we wanted to make sure that those projects were accounted for. So again, it's this evaluation of our own criteria, right? Is this the right system? But we wanted to take advantage of the CIP update process and make sure that we were planning for those proposed sewer projects. Of course, sewer utility projects scored well in replacement and maintenance criterion, as you might anticipate, but had poor scores in community priority, again, as the sewer master plan is still in draft. Moving on to transportation, and again, we're going to spend a little bit more of our time here tonight. So transportation category followed all the other asset categories, and that there's more maintenance, more emphasis on maintenance and infrastructure replacement programs. But one thing to note that I wanted to make sure you're aware of is that we are proposing a decrease in pavement management program funding this year versus previous years. As you know, the PMP has had a lot of investment in the past couple of years, and there was a pavement condition index report that was attached to your materials this evening. That report shows that some of those efforts have been beneficial. We've been seeing an increase in our scores. We do have Bennett Ashbaugh here tonight, if you have questions specifically about that information. But we decreased PMP funding because we are anticipating a loss of REIT funds, real estate excise tax. That is a major funding source for a lot of our infrastructure, and given the state of the economy today and the amount of real estate sales that are occurring, we are seeing a decline in those funds. And so we had to account for that somewhere, and because the pavement condition reports are showing that the work that we've done in the past couple of years and that there's overall an improvement in the condition of our roads, that's why we have suggested a decrease in funding. Then...
Just a second. Councilwoman DeMichele?
Just can you articulate what the percentage of decrease is going to be?
The decrease was something like a little over $700,000. Do you know the percentage?
It's approximately that. It's, I mean, it's early in the year, so we're doing this based on the guess, but our receipts have been down this year compared to last year consecutively, for four months consecutively now. We saw a little tiny bit of rebound in April, but certainly, the activity between 2022 and 2023 has decreased. So we're estimating about $700,000 lower at this point. We're watching it all summer. When we come to you with the mid biennial review later this year, we'll have updated numbers, because we'll have a few more months in the summer season to see how it's going. Essentially, real estate is slower. Commercial, we're not seeing the level of transactions we saw last year.
Okay. Thank you.
I also want to point out that the CIP is a planning document. It's not a budget. And so we're trying to be responsive to some of the trends that we see and plan for some of those trends, but it could all change, especially in a community like ours. If there's one large commercial sale of a property, that can really change the picture, right? So we're just trying to plan ahead for this and make sure that we're planning for it, but we'll really be able to, you know, take a better look, as Robert was saying, with the mid-biennial adjustment, and then with the adoption of the new budget. Moving on, there are 31 transportation projects or programs in the draft six-year plan. This is compared to 18. So transportation is number one. We heard that recommendation, and we are incorporating those recommendations. We have a lot of new items in the plan this year that are mostly related to traffic signal and ITS-related equipment. ITS, again, is intelligent transportation systems. It's those smart traffic signals and other related technologies, including the rectangular rapid flashing beacons. I usually forget what the first R means, and Emily had to correct me last time. So we have the RRFB replacement program. That's a new item that you'll see. So again, that replacement of equipment, maintenance of equipment, and ITS, we've incorporated those things into this TIP, Transportation Improvement Plan. It also, again, anticipates a transportation benefit district sales tax of 0.1% for transportation projects starting in January 2024. That's when we would hope to collect that revenue, starting in January, which would require an August approval or an August vote from City Council. Or, I'm sorry, at least this fall, not necessarily August. I meant autumn. So, again, we're not asking for that approval of the sales tax with the adoption of the CIP. What we're asking is, should we continue to pursue this option?
Question on that. So if we adopt the CIP and don't adopt the additional sales tax, how do we square that circle?
Yeah, that means that we're not going to do all of those projects, right? We need to figure out what projects, then, we are able to fund. The CIP is a planning document. It's not a budget. It's not set in stone. And so we would have to assess, are there other revenue options the council would prefer that we pursue, or are there other projects or programs that we would have to not fund in order to fund transportation projects? So we'd have to have a lot more discussion.
And again, that'd be approximately $2.2 million a year.
Yeah. Well, just think about this as we move forward, if we want to do these things in concert. I mean, we don't have to. I understand that we can separate them in time, but they are fairly linked. I mean, I wouldn't want to approve a plan and then say, oh, shucks, we have to go back and back some stuff out of it. So I would be more comfortable, I would interest in what you think, about doing these things together as opposed to asynchronously. Yeah, just because I don't want to, A, feel like we're in a box, that we have to approve the tax because we approved the CIP, and I don't want to be in another box, which is, we didn't approve the tax and now we have to back out projects from the CIP.
Any thoughts from you guys, you all?
Well, and I think we get to this later on in the presentation, too, but, I mean, in the end, it would just be like two projects, right? So we would just, and those are already planned for future years anyways, right? So if we were, for some reason or another, later in the year to decide, no, we don't want to move forward with this path, we would, those two projects would just, their funding, their identified funding source would be struck from the CIP. Is that right?
Yes, and we are, I think this conversation might flesh out a little bit later as we talk about other taxation options and what our options are within this proposal.
Okay. Let's go on. Oh, Barb?
Just want to emphasize what Andrea said earlier, and that is, there's still a community process to go through. And to emphasize what was said at the podium under community comment, we don't want to go out with a done deal and then tell the public what we want them to say back to us. So that public process needs to be open and transparent. So it's going to take some time, and I think we just need to let that conversation with the community take its course.
Thank you. I just want to be sure that I'm capturing your thoughts. Great. So how the transportation projects scored with the criteria, many of the transportation items scored very high in equity, because we looked at gaps within our infrastructure and where areas were, you know, disproportionate, maybe, had gaps in investment versus other areas. That's one of the things we looked at. So in general, the transportation items scored pretty high in equity.
I think we have a question.
Can we go just, I was really intrigued, because I went down the equity column and looked at the ones that scored high on that. Was it, and maybe there was no common theme, but was there a common theme around particular neighborhoods, around different racial groups, or, you know, socioeconomic levels? Or what was the, what seemed to be the driving theme in those conversations?
Yeah, I think I'd like to look to Director Moon to see if, do you have a response that you can provide, or perhaps John Mortensen?
Good evening. Emily Moon, Public Works Director. Can you repeat the question for me?
You know, I just was intrigued, because some of the projects, you know, showed, highlighted a strong green under equity, and I just wondered if there was a theme that emerged, like certain neighborhoods in Issaquah that felt that they, or that the Equity Board felt were, had not received equal treatment? Or was it more aligned with racial groups, or was it more aligned with socioeconomic status? Was there a theme that emerged in the conversations when we were putting the green equity on some of those projects?
Sure. I can speak to our internal process in the department. Perhaps a deputy city administrator can speak to any commentary from the Equity Board. Internally, we look at a variety of factors when we are trying to measure equity. We looked at geographic coverage, representation in various neighborhoods that, to some degree, can be a proxy for some of the socioeconomic differences in our community. So we look at that as a factor. We also look at how frequently improvements have been made, or infrequently improvements have been made in those different geographies. So we look at kind of time implications and as a fairness kind of proxy as well. We looked at the way in which particular projects can affect different numbers of people as a way to think about equity as well. What's the reach of a particular project? And then we examine the need of the projects. Certain projects are highly designed to attend to safety concerns, for example, and may be very focused on things like ADA improvements. So there are also, I would say, populations that we focus on, ensuring that we are making the improvements that are necessary to better serve those populations. So it's a very comprehensive look, and I'm looking at John. John has one more he wants to add, since he was the primary on rating the projects.
Couple others that I did want to add are access to transit and non-motorized transportation also were heavily considered for the equity component.
That's really informative. Andrea, you may want to add something more, too, but that really is helpful to hear that. And there were things in there that I hadn't thought of, but obviously, very well considered by staff, so thank you very much for that explanation.
Thank you. Most projects within this category were considered neutral, that yellow color to climate resiliency and environmental benefit. And I say neutral here, but it's really yellow, and I want to make this distinction, because, again, we have such a high bar on climate resiliency and environmental benefit and how we define that. So to even get a yellow is scoring pretty high towards the environment. So, in fact, red is considered... resiliency and environmental benefit and how we define that. So to even get a yellow is scoring pretty high towards the environment. So in fact, red is considered no impacts to the environment, no direct perceivable impacts to the environment. So again, as John was saying, we looked at these transportation projects in terms of, do we think that this is going to contribute to Issaquah's proportion of climate change? Are we thinking about, do these projects help reduce SOV trips and things like that? And so those are some of the things that we looked at when we evaluated transportation projects against climate resiliency and environmental benefit. So scoring, scoring yellow is actually pretty strong with how we've defined this criteria. And then projects that scored poorly in climate resiliency and environmental benefit often scored high in life safety. So again, those red marks that you might see on that chart in your packet doesn't necessarily mean that these projects are terrible for the environment, but they are determined necessary when it comes to life safety. So we talk about reducing traffic incidents, increasing safety of our intersections, crosswalks, et cetera. So moving on to the transportation benefit district sales tax, this is actually a new revenue tool for transportation benefit districts. As of 2022, it was enabled by the state legislature for it to be council manic, meaning that it does not require a ballot measure or a vote of the people. It can be enacted by council. This is a new tool since the task force met. When the task force met and recommended a TBD sales tax, it was of 0.2% and it would be something that would have to be approved by voters. And this, this tool just wasn't available to us. The state legislature passed it after the task force stopped meeting. And so, and so that's why we are proposing this tool. We think that it's still in alignment with many of the recommendations and the intent of the recommendations made by the task force. The TBD sales tax was recommended by the task force because while sales tax is problematic when it comes to equity, it's considered, sales tax is often considered regressive because it means that people of low incomes pay a higher percentage of their income. So in many ways, it's considered regressive. The city is also really limited into the number of tools, revenue tools that we have at our disposal to raise revenues to be able to make these projects happen. And one of the things that the task force had said why they recommended a sales tax was because it would really distribute the cost of the infrastructure to many more of the users of that infrastructure. So people coming to Issaquah, whether by bike or walking or bus, and they come and buy something or access a service that we have in Issaquah, or if they drive, of course, and they access a service, they're all users of the transportation infrastructure to get here and access these goods and services. And so it distributes the costs among the transportation, amongst the users of the transportation network versus just putting all of those costs on residents like a property tax does. And so with the two main tools of paying for infrastructure that the city has, property tax or sales tax, the task force had said the sales tax seems to be a good way of trying to distribute the costs of the network onto the users beyond just the property owners in Issaquah.
Good question for you. Do we have any data on, on our sales tax revenue? What percentage comes from inside the city and which, how much comes from externally? I'll wait.
Okay. And then we do, as Robert said earlier, we do anticipate this tax would raise about $2.2 million annually. And we have proposed that we would use these funds to help fund the Northwest Mamish Non-Motorized Improvements, which as council may recall, has long been unfunded in our CIP. So this would help us identify funds to actually make that project happen. And as well as the Intelligent Transportation System Implementation, which is a series of projects. That ITS plan still has yet to come to this committee. So we're still in the process of forming and finalizing that plan. But again, we wanted to take advantage of this CIP update to make sure that we're incorporating some of the things that we're working on to make sure that we don't lose this opportunity to plan for those projects. I see there's a question.
Just a quick question. So TBD sales tax, is it, under law, must be spent on transportation projects? And then secondly, it would be us designating the projects that it would go to? Or are there criteria by law that it has to go to certain types of projects?
It has to go towards transportation projects within the benefit district, which is defined as the boundaries of the city. And, and I think, when, should council adopt this tax? You don't necessarily need to define how, exactly how those revenues will be spent on which projects. It's just for transportation projects that would occur within the TBD. But what we're trying to do with the CIP is plan for these projects, figure out where we'd assign these revenues and make sure that some of these projects that are currently unfunded or partially funded then have assigned funding.
Okay, a quick follow-up then. Can we use that money to leverage for other funds from the federal government or the state then? Okay.
Yes, yes. And that's certainly the hope. Some of these projects are just concepts at this point. And so we're just getting to the point, or we will be, especially, let's talk about the Northwest Mamish Non-Motorized Improvements. We do anticipate going out for grants, but it's still a little too early to understand how competitive we might be or how much of this project might be funded by grants. But that's still, we will continue to pursue grant funding for our projects. Great. So we wanted to talk a little bit about impact to residents and understand what 0.1% sales tax would, would cause in terms of impact. So average annual impact per household. And maybe, Robert, you want to come up and present on the slide? I'll let him do it.
So there was a very astute comment, I believe by Councilmember De Michele yesterday, and correct me if it was a different council member regarding property tax and what the impact is if you increase property tax to residents that even renters would get impacted because they're paying, sorry, Councilmember Ray, I apologize. It was close, next to each other. Sales tax is a little bit more complicated than that because there are certain items that, everyday items, when you think about going to the grocery store, even filling up the gas tank, those items are not applicable to the sales tax. They have, groceries do not have tax, gas has a fixed excise tax from the state. So sales tax is not applied to some of those everyday items that impact people. At the same time, you know, again, the question, I know it just happened about how, what a percentage of residents are shopping here. We're assuming most residents are doing most of their shopping here. I don't think the city's done a very intensive market study the past few years. I don't think we have all that data. But it would be inconvenient, just for hypothetical sake, if you're at home in the city of Issaquah, you don't, you don't, say you don't work in another city and you're going to Bellevue or going to Seattle to shop. We're not really seeing those patterns that much. We have almost all the retail stores minus Walmart, you have all the retail stores that those other cities have within a 30 mile or 30-minute radius of us. So we're not seeing a lot of leakage per se from our residents. So what we are seeing is we're the hub for so many different areas around us. If you look at Sumamish, you look at North Bend, Snoqualmie, Snoqualmie Valley, Fall City area, almost all those residents come to Issaquah to shop. And just personal situation, when I lived in Snoqualmie during the pandemic, we couldn't even get Instacart to deliver to our house. So we had to go to Issaquah even when everything else was shut down to do our shopping. And even now, a lot of those rural areas don't have the same delivery services that you could get here. So Issaquah is always going to be that hub for those surrounding communities. So we're assuming 40%, but also when you look at, it's not just people driving in, it's also the daytime population because we're a corporate headquarters city. You have Costco, you have REI, you have a Microsoft presence here. Because of that, you have, you're always going to have at least, I'd say, you know, it's not scientific because we don't have the actual data, but probably between somewhere around 40% of the sales tax coming from outside. So, but not everybody in the community, and this is where it gets tricky, spends the same on products. Some people are more frugal than others. Some people might buy a car one year, some people might wait 20 years to buy a car. So not everybody has the same consumer habits. That's why it's hard to get an average. But if just looking at the per capita, if we're looking at, not even looking at the outside coming in, but just looking at, looking at the number of households, looking at the population, we're estimating it's about $100 impact, assuming people are doing normal spending habits and other, you know, buying furniture a couple of times a year, buying other large goods a couple of times a year to have them delivered directly to the home where Issaquah gets that tax collected. So we're assuming it would be about $100 per household, not per person. And again, what that resonates to, if you bought a $40,000 car at Evergreen, the price would increase about $40. So that's the 0.1% sales tax. And so in a $500 television, for example, would increase by 50 cents. So that's kind of what's happening here. Again, gas and most grocery areas are not subject to sales tax. And so that's the annual impact. It would be the same impact that the city experienced with, when council approved the affordable housing sales tax. So local tax rates, I know this did come up yesterday. Yes, Bellevue is the same rate as us. They are 10.1%. Newcastle is also 10.1%. We are, Kirkland is 10.2%, Auburn is 10.2%, Seattle is 10.25. I rounded up to three once, but 10.25% for Seattle. Shoreline is the highest in King County at 10.3%. You can see Snoqualmie, North Bend and Covington are lower because they're outside the Sound Transit Project area. And so going up 0.1% would put us on par with Kirkland. So the sales tax breakdown, I know that question was asked, state share is 6.5%. So that goes straight to the state. State criminal justice is 0.1%. We get a very small portion back of that, that tax. Sound transit though is 1.4%. So sound transit is actually higher than what the city collects. King County Metro is 0.9%. County General Share is 0.15%. County Mental Health is 0.1%. And then you can see our general sales tax is 0.85%. Affordable housing is 0.1%. So of that 10.1%, if it's every $1 you pay in sales tax, the city receives approximately 10 cents. So again, we're talking about a small portion of the overall sales tax. And back to Andrea's point earlier, our revenues are very limited in what we can raise at the city. So again, council manic, we can only raise a 0.1. Voter approved, we could raise a 0.2. I'm going to show it in an adjacent slide, but we're very limited on what we can get. And so that's part of why we're recommending this option. Any questions on that? So other revenue options, 0.2% voter approved TBD sales tax, that would have to go to voters that would generate approximately $4.4 million of annual revenue. The other option, you could do a voter approved TBD CAR TAB increase. It would, you can go up to $100 with voter approval per household, generate about $2 million annually. Voter approved levy lid lift for transportation, every $2 million in annual revenue would have an average property tax impact of about $150 annually.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. And are all these independent of each other? Are these mutually exclusive? Like you have to pick one or the other? Or do we have a 0.2% cap for the transportation benefit district? You can either go sales tax or you can go CAR TAB? How does that go?
So there's actually no cap. You can do a combination. The cap for sales tax alone would be 0.3%. So you could do the 0.1% council manic. You also have the availability to do 0.2% voter approved at a 50 plus 1% voter approval rate. And the CAR TAB, you can go up with voter, you can, council manic after 48 months, you can go to $50 council manic. You can go up to $100 with voter approval.
And the only TBD that I know that's done, that vehicle license fee is Maple Valley. Is that the only one?
No, several cities have it. The city of Snoqualmie implemented it about two years ago.
Oh, really? Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Robert. So a couple of options for which projects would be funded by this proposed tax. The first option, which is what we're recommending within the proposed CIP, is that we would fund those ITS projects and Northwest Mamish Non-Motorized Improvements. Another option for council's consideration is to fund the Black Nugget Wall rehabilitation and the ITS projects. And third option would be to help fund the Squawk Mountain Multimodal Improvements as well as ITS projects. So you see ITS projects mentioned in each of these options. It's not because we're trying to push it on you. It's not because it's our favorite project within the TIP. Of course, we don't have any personal favorites, but, but it's just really looking at a function of how much revenue can we raise and how much do these projects cost? And so that's why ITS projects just fits in nicely as a complement. So if council wanted to say, why can't we do Black Nugget Wall and Squawk Mountain Multimodal Improvements and push ITS projects to the side? The answer is because with this 0.1% TBD sales tax, we wouldn't be raising enough revenue to do that. At least we don't anticipate that at this point. So that's why the options all include ITS projects. Any questions on what some of these options are for your consideration?
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. You know, not on these options, I'm just wondering if the administration, kind of what the administration considered narrowing down to this. So like two others, using the criteria that was in the memo, two others kind of stood out to me. And that was the strategic small capital projects because they're, they don't cost very much. And having a consistent revenue coming in to be able to address immediate needs as they come up in neighborhoods or whatever we're applying that to, seemed like a good fit, a potential good fit at least. And then also, as we know, in the community survey, pavement management or the condition of roads and sidewalks was identified as a needs emphasis area. So as we're seeing rate go down, did we potentially consider pavement management? Would this do?
Great, great question. And yes, we did consider it. We were really trying to look at, so the memo does talk about, okay, of, of all of our options for things we can fund with this potential new revenue source, we tried to narrow it down further by looking at, what do we, what do we know that we've heard our recent community priorities? We've heard council feedback that we should be focusing on these projects and trying to identify which of the projects within the six-year plan, not out, not in future years, but even within the six-year plan that are unfunded or partially funded still. And so we tried to focus on those projects that are unfunded or partially funded. And I think the biggest projects or the most glaring holes in funding were ITS projects, Northwest Mamish Non-Motorized, Black Nugget Wall. Some of the other projects, PMP or programs have some funding that are assigned. And if we have an increase in rate, then we can apply that. Real estate excise tax, if we have that funding that becomes available, then we can always apply it to those things. But we're really looking for these big gaps where there are projects yet unfunded or have major phases that are unfunded. So that's, that's some of the things. I think there are a few other criteria that we looked at that are mentioned in the memo, but that's, that's why we narrowed it down. Certainly if council would prefer us to look at other things, other options, we're more than happy to do that. We just wanted to try to make it somewhat manageable for your consideration and narrow it down to three combinations that we know we could afford with this anticipated revenue. Okay. So wanted to go over some of the TAB feedback, in particular, the Transportation Advisory Board. They, they did not provide comment on the sales tax itself or the projects that we recommend funding. That, that conversation really stayed focused on the criteria and how we applied that criteria. They did ask many questions about the tax, so did our other boards, but they didn't have specific comment on it. So there was strong general support for the CIP public process and that update process. They, they wanted me to say strong support, so that's in there. They also had said- They also had said that some of the members weren't able to attend the board summit and they really wanted to be a part of it, so they wanted us to livestream that. Again, that longstanding commitment criteria, which we talked about briefly earlier, they thought was very important, but should be reevaluated in a transparent way by council according to current goals and values, again with that eye on equity especially. There was agreement among TAB that safety and maintenance is really important and should trump some of the other needs and trump some of the other criteria. And so they thought that we had applied that correctly despite maybe some of the, you know, environmental benefits criteria, you know, that some projects scored red with that, but maybe were, were trumped by safety and maintenance. So they agreed with that approach. And then there was a suggestion for future CIP processes and how to involve the boards, that the boards thought it would be great. The TAB specifically thought it would be great to have an activity where they could apply the criteria to a sample of projects themselves and really figure out how to apply it themselves. They would become more familiar with it and then they could provide better feedback on, on the criteria itself. Okay, so reminder of where we are in this process. We're in that dark black bolded font there. Council committees review sections of the CIP, provide your feedback. And then we come together at the Committee of the Whole in June to discuss the entire CIP, including this question of the TBD sales tax. And then again, we're hopeful for council adoption by July 1st. Any questions?
All right, questions? Anyone? Zach?
Thank you. So you've already, or you've already answered some of my questions. Let me just, I highlighted them in yellow. Oh, back on board and commission feedback, I forgot to ask this earlier. So the park board also talked about sequencing and like whether or not we should consider kind of the sequencing of projects as in prioritization. And I'm just curious how the administration thought about that piece of feedback.
I'm, I'm trying to remind myself of exactly what that comment was at the park board. It feels like an eternity ago. So I think it was sequencing and priorities within that six-year timeframe of how noting that some projects may score higher in a certain phase and how that is planned throughout the six years. Is that right? I need to go back and reference.
Yeah, here it is. I found it. Okay, in the future, criteria should include ability to recognize the sequencing of projects, where one project should score better if it is necessary to support a bigger community priority.
Right.
So I thought that was an insightful piece of feedback. So I'm just curious what you thought about it.
Yeah, that is very insightful and something we've talked a lot about, especially when it comes to IT upgrades. And so IT being a necessary first step in some cases to achieve these other projects. ITS is a really good example of this. So in order for us to have a great smart traffic signal system, for example, we need to lay a lot of fiber conduit to make that happen. And you'll see a lot of fiber conduit projects, fiber optic projects in the technology section of the CIP. And those are there as a first step towards ITS projects, which you might see in the transportation section of the CIP. And so we do, we do think about that and think about how these projects are linked. Maybe one thing, laying, laying fiber optics doesn't sound like a high community priority. It doesn't sound like it does a lot on its own for life safety, but we know that it's related and necessary to, to these other projects. So we consider that as a whole.
And I'm sure that's just one example of how we think about that. And there are lots of ways. And I wonder if maybe the parks director could kind of circle back with the park board and say that that was a great piece of feedback and here are kind of some of the ways that we do consider that, just so they felt heard.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. With regard to, nope, answered that already. Oh, so with the CIP itself, I finally did have an opportunity to dig into all of it. But the planning document kind of alignment matrix at the front is great because that's what, you know, the council, we wanted to see more alignment with our strategic planning documents. I'd love to see that. Last year, oh, actually, let's just start at this. How did you consider, like, were there any, was there any consideration of, well, we want this many projects to be aligned with this strategic plan in the CIP? So we want to have at least five that are aligned with the climate action plan. We want to have at least five that are aligned with the mobility master plan. I know that would be kind of like criteria on top of criteria on top of criteria. I'm just curious how we thought about, was it more after the fact? Okay, these are how the projects lined up with the different strategic planning documents? Or was that thought beforehand?
We, we looked at what each of those planning documents suggested. So between their policies or some name particular projects. So we derive projects from the master mobility plan, for example, and look at, okay, what's suggested within the MMP? Where are we at? You know, does, do we have the ability? Then we look at the other criteria to, to select projects for the CIP, right? So we look at, from projects suggested in the MMP, do we have the ability to deliver on this project? Does it meet our climate resiliency goals? The project, the criteria that we discussed earlier. So we start at that master plan level. Of course, the master plan is informed by the strategic plan, by the comprehensive plan, right? And so we don't necessarily think about, well, we need to have five from each plan. It's more having the plans drive which projects we select, then we score them against the criteria, and that's how they end up in the CIP. Of course, we take that while incorporating other feedback we've heard from the task force, from city council, from the community as well.
Right, okay. So all these projects that are coming, that might be identified in the plans, they're up here and then they're going through the funnel.
That's exactly right. Yeah. There's a great funnel graphic I used in all of my board presentations that I should, I should use for my future council committee.
Always use funnel graphics, yes, always.
Yes, I, this is the learning committee too, so you're, you're our guinea pigs. We can see what other information we need to include for our future council committee presentation. So I'm going to include that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I also found it, let's see, kind of hearing the equity criteria breakdown and what went into that was really helpful to me. One thing I didn't, one thing I noticed was that we had a description of the criteria in, in the criteria attachment. And we talked about that at a retreat and all that too. But how it was applied is challenging to see if you're just looking at that document. And even just like I said, getting that understanding of how equity was applied in that one case or across all those projects made me understand much, much more deeply. But that's not present for the other ones. So I'm just wondering if, are we keeping track of kind of how staff are applying criteria internally? Do we see that that's necessary or a need?
I think the, the short answer is yes. So when the projects were evaluated by the project managers and then vetted further internally, they applied those, those criteria. And so there, there is a rationale that we have for how we have scored those projects. We didn't want to include long narratives against, you know, what is it, eight or nine criteria for every single project? There's quite a few projects, I think 300 plus within the CIP. So it's a matter of just trying to make it digestible. But certainly if you have any questions about how those criteria were applied, that is something we focused a little bit more on in the, at the board level. But if there's any questions I can answer for you today, I'm happy to do that.
Well, I think even just knowing that we have good justification for how we're applying criteria is important. I mean, even the environmental board was saying, well, maybe environmental sustainability and climate resiliency should live as different criteria, but we also don't want to create a million criteria. So we put them together, but understanding how, those two things are very different still, but they, but they live together. And so if one score is great and one scores the other, or one score is red, understanding how they're being applied through different lenses, either environment or climate, might be different. I'm not sure if that sentence made sense, but it did in my head.
Yes.
So, and I hope you're understanding what I'm saying. It's just like, it, it'll be good to know that we have that kind of documentation in case we want to get into it.
Yeah, and I think hopefully what's helpful in the, the climate resiliency and environmental benefit criteria is a complicated one because it looks at climate resiliency and habitat and ecosystem impacts. And those things can be married together and they can also be very different. So I think what also helps provide a level of transparency is that we have that document available publicly, talking about what constitutes a red, yellow and green threshold. So it's not just how is each criteria defined and then you see a color assigned to it, but it really lays out, here's, here's more specifically what we mean when we say it's green or what we mean when we say it's yellow. And I think that just provides a little bit more understanding for how those projects fit in without having a paragraph narrative assigned to each project and each criteria.
Anything else? Barb? I just have a question kind of about public outreach. I mean, we've done a lot of reaching out to the boards and, and that's super important and super positive, but what's the, what's the ongoing public outreach and engagement thinking?
Yeah, so a good question. On the CIP specifically, let's talk about that first because I think there's probably another question about the TBD and sales tax in there as well. So with the CIP, if I had that great funnel graphic, I could use it as a backdrop to talk about when public engagement really begins. And it really begins at that master plan, top level concept. What's within, what's within the master plan? What's our visioning for mobility in Issaquah? And we go through a lot of pub, we engage the public in that master planning process. And that master plan also suggests a number of capital projects. So that's when we first start engaging the public in that master planning process. And then we're here in the CIP phase. That's kind of where we go from the master planning process. In the CIP phase, just creating this document, we have had a number of public meetings with our boards and commissions that helped create those plans. So we're looking at them and we're saying, what's within the CIP? Did that reflect what's, what you intended within the master mobility plan, for example? So we want to check that back with them because they know those plans better than anybody. And then as we're designing projects, so from concept, which we saw recently with the Northwest Mammoth non-motorized improvements, we're having open houses with members of the public, we're having surveys with members of the public to gain their feedback on exactly what this project should look like, what it should include, right? And so that happens within the design and conceptual phase. And then there's other types of public engagement we do as we, as we implement the project as well. So there's different phases of public engagement at different phases of project from concept to implementation. When we talk about the, the sales tax, it is true, we haven't had a lot of public engagement at this point. We started with the Community Capital Finance Community Task Force who, who recommended. That was a task force that looked deeply at what are the types of revenues that are available to us? How are we spending some of our revenues? Let's look at some of these unfunded projects. And so that's how we started because finance is a, is a complicated concept. And so we started on the task force level with, if council says we should continue to pursue a revenue option, whether that's a TBD sales tax or a different type of new revenue tool, then at that point we will want to create a public engagement plan and, and really engage the public on that level so that we understand from them, is this something that they agree that we need? If it's something that is to be approved by voters, of course, we would be doing additional surveys and testing interests and tolerances of our community.
Great, thank you. Anything else? All right, we've got another opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody in the room who would like to make public comment? Is there, city clerk, is there anybody online who might have their hand raised?
There's one virtual attendee. There is not a hand raised at this time.
Okay. So we will move on. All right, so let's go to our, there you go, directions slide. Anybody want to get us started with your thoughts? Councilmember DeMichele?
Okay, I'll go first. So just a general comment, I, I did see that the criteria on equity had been much changed and I was really pleased with the way it had changed. And so thank you, thank you to the staff for, for that really thoughtful process. I'm sure it was well, well discussed and the wording I thought was really, really appropriate. So many thanks, many thanks for that. I do think that the proposed CIP is responding to the council's goals and outcomes, so I don't have any suggested improvements at this, at this point. Is the committee's support of a council matic 1% TBD sales tax, am I comfortable with that? Yes. And I, I think that Director Hamid's presentation was very full of good information for, that could be used to take out to voters, or they're not voters, if it's council matic, but to the public to explain what this is going to do. I do see a little bit of difference between this 1% and the 1% we did for affordable housing in that we were able to apply those funds right away and we could show the public, here's what we did already with your money and here's the projects that have been funded and here's how many people have been put, gotten permanent housing and all of those nice things. And this is going to take a while for us to see the results. And so I think a very carefully explaining the projects that we're supporting and then I wonder if we want to do some thinking about what's coming after ITS and the Northwest Mammoth non-motorized. I know those are big projects and it's going to be multiple years before we see the outcomes. And I think that is the part that's going to be difficult for the public to understand. And so I think how we message that is going to be really important and how we're going to use those funds, hopefully, as I said, to leverage for additional funds from outside of our revenue source will be really important. But I think that you made the case tonight. Real frankly, you sold me on the 1% TBD sales tax and the importance of doing that. I think that the Capital Finance Committee identified needs. We heard just in our recent survey, again, transportation, top priority of our community. And so at some point we have to say, we're not going to be able to pay for those projects that you want so badly if we don't do something to bring in additional revenue. So I think the case is there. I'm not crazy about sales tax, but because it is a regressive tax, but in this case, again, I think that the information that was presented shows that it's a very small impact on people's, most average people's sales. So I would be very comfortable with that. And as I understand it, what we're saying is we're comfortable with exploring it further. Right, okay. So those are my comments and thank you to the staff. I think it was an excellent presentation and very informative, so thank you for the
Deputy Council President Hall?
Sure, thank you. First and foremost, thank you for clearly months and months and months of hard work that went into this. This is just the latest step in the long step process. So thank you for all the work that, that you've done on this and everyone else at the city who's touched this, of course, who can't be here with us tonight. So the first course, the first question about alignment with our goals and outcomes chart, pretty much, but not quite, right? So we have the, the criteria on longstanding commitment that's underdefined, but that's by design. We're going to be defining that more sooner, at least I hope so. So my thought would be, and I didn't necessarily support the idea when this came up at the retreat, so if we cannot find a good way to make this clear and transparent, I completely root with our boards and commissions and we should, we shouldn't use it as a criteria. That's just my current thinking about it. But I think we can find a way to be clear about it and write the things under it. So that's just going to take some work on our part. And it would be good, well, it'll be good to have the administration's thoughts too on how, how we can define that before going into that one meeting. Beyond that, you know, I was really thinking with regard to goals one and two, which really focus on clarity, that are which really focus on clarity, that our criteria matrix and the way we're applying criteria, it's not quite clear the rationale why one might be giving one or the other, even though we've defined what red, yellow, and red is. But I think you make a fair point that we can't go through all the projects and describe exactly why this one was a green, and exactly why this one is yellow, and publish that as a 300-page appendix. So there's probably just the policy question of just a balancing act here in terms of being as clear as possible, but also making sure that this is a readable document. That's the other part of clarity, too. And we had talked about that at the retreat, is making sure this can be a document that the community can actually look at. So I don't think, that's not a criticism of mine anymore. I was just kind of going full circle there. But the longstanding commitment one is still missing clarity. And so as soon as that's done, I do think that it will be aligned with the goals and outcomes chart. The council manic 0.1% TBD sales tax. So as has already pointed out, the closest thing as of right now that we have to, you know, community support on a new revenue source is that the Capital Finance Community Task Force. And they also, as was pointed out, they considered the sales tax as a ballot initiative. I completely agree with Councilmember DeMichele that transportation was identified and has always been identified as a top priority here in Issaquah. So has, you know, cost of living, and that has risen up as a needs emphasis in the community survey that we just looked at recently. So, I mean, if I had to make a decision today, I would not be comfortable moving forward with a 0.1% sales tax. And I would rather go forward with something that has been attested with the community at least a little bit, which is the 0.2% sales tax on the ballot. That said, you started tonight's meeting from the get-go saying, this is just to explore. There would be a lot more robust community engagement along the process. So if that's true, and if that kind of plan can be detailed to the council, I'll feel much more comfortable. But again, if I had to make a decision today, it would be no. So since you've said that we're going to have that discussion, I'm comfortable continuing the conversation. So that's my thoughts on the 0.1% TBD sales tax proposal. Of the projects identified in the funding, absolutely I support, including Northwest Semamish Road project, in that we know that that has been a longtime community priority ever since that area was annexed into the city of Issaquah. And we have struggled, even though it has become such a priority of this council and this administration. We even went on a bus tour there recently to see the pinch point and to see the site of the future project. We have not found the construction dollars for that yet. So it is great that we potentially have an opportunity to find those dollars with this new revenue source. So, you know, if we were to move forward that, I would like to see that as part of it. As for the other things, I don't think I feel strongly one way or the other, though I would like to see an exploration of maybe a few smaller projects that do have some ongoing revenue sources, not necessarily ones that are just unfunded. So the strategic small capital projects, I think, could potentially be a good fit. And I'm just curious what the administration thinks about that, and whether or not that could potentially backfill pavement management as that's been. The community has so loved the increase in investment of pavement management across the community in the last few years. And it was identified again as a needs emphasis area in the community survey. So again, just something for the administration to chew on. Could this also be thrown into the mix of options that we could consider as council? I think that might be it. Yeah, I think those are my comments, so thank you again.
All right, let me bring us home. I think the CIP does a nice job of responding to the goals and outcomes so far. I disagree with Deputy Counsel President Hall on the wanting to see more detail on the criteria. I think that's part of transparency, is to say, here's the criteria, here's how we apply them, here's how we rank them. I think that, though it's a lot of narrative, I think it's important, I think it's part of transparency. So that would be my only comment on that. On the 0.1% TBD sales tax, supportive to a point. Then the point is, as long as there is robust community outreach and that we recognize that though our capital funding task force was a bunch of really great people working really hard, that's not the community, and so we need to embrace the community as a whole if we're going to do that. I would really love to hear what they have to say. And we might find from that community outreach that they're even excited about a 0.2% sales tax increase, then we go to the ballot. But I think this is an important step. Without going through that step, I would not support this in the long run. But I think it's important that we go there. And then, I'm really torn, because, you know, these are my two favorite projects in the whole CIP that you put on here, and then tie them to the TBD, and I hate you for doing that. But I really believe, and ITS really is a whole raft of things, really. It's not just a single project. So I think that that's really important, and I wouldn't want to not do it if we don't do the TBD. And I, and then my only problem with the Northwest Semamish Non-Motorized is, you know, when you look at the CIP, it's 2027 kind of timeframe. So to Councilmember DeMichele's point, we're raising the revenue, and yet we're not going to pull the trigger in a meaningful way for several years. And so if we move ahead in that direction, we have to be in a position to say, here's what we're going to do with the money, and it's out there. And so you get that disconnect in time between, we're going to raise your taxes, oh, and then, you know, four years later, we're going to start building out this project that's so important. So I don't know that it's a showstopper, but I know that it is a, it'll be a challenging communications challenge, challenging communications problem. All right, that's all I've got. Councilmember DeMichele?
Yeah, well, I just want to speak in defense of ITS, because it sounds like, it was like, well, we're not really sure about that. But the number one item we heard on the recent community survey was traffic flow, the ease of traffic flow. And there's nothing that we have that helps it. My favorite is transit, but again, that's not coming for a long time. We can improve and replace some of the old and wearing-out systems for the ITS system soon. And so if we're going to help our community do something pretty soon about the flow of traffic in the area, ITS is what we want to focus on. So I really support the fact that it's being suggested as one of the projects we would support this way. And also, I think the point that was made earlier, it's a smaller project that kind of fits very well with other projects. And so I would hate for us to start tinkering around to see if there's other little projects that might go in there. I think it just meets that community need so well and pairs so well with other large projects that I would hate to see us start to move that out and looking at other things. I think that ITS would definitely be a top project that I would want to support. Just defending.
Oh, no, and I just want to comment on that, because as I said at the beginning, I have been the biggest ITS fan for at least almost six years in thinking that this is the only tool we've really got in our toolkit. So I think it's great. I just want to do it regardless of whether or not we do the, that's my point, is actually the opposite, which is, we need to do this regardless of whether we do a TBD. And I wouldn't want to have it if we opt not to do TBD, saying, yeah, ITS is out. So that's, I think it's our, as you just said so eloquently, probably our best lever we have in terms of mobility. Yeah, to do something quickly. Councilmember Hall?
Well, and just in case I wasn't clear, I also like ITS. I just want to make sure that we're considering other things, too. I mean, this could be game-changing on ongoing revenue if we move forward with it. Neither of these two things that we have associated with it are ongoing needs either. So another criteria that we could, as a council, consider is potentially pairing it with ongoing expenditures in transportation or something like that. So I just want to make sure that council has all the information it needs to make a good decision. If that decision ends up being Northwest Semamish Road and ITS, great. But maybe we could have a few more options thrown in the mix, just so we have a, you know, good decision.
All right, everybody good? All right, Andrea, did you get what you needed from us?
I did, thank you very much. And I'd also just like to take this opportunity to thank the staff who have joined us here this evening to help answer questions. So thank you Bennett and John and Emily, and of course, Robert, who helped me present. So thank you, and got a lot of great feedback from you all this evening. So really appreciate the questions and the depth of the conversation.
We also have our newest staff member here tonight, Nathan Hatia. He's our new budget analyst, and he's also been helping with the documents.
All right, welcome. Glad you were here. All right. I am just drawing a blank if we have good of the order on the agenda.
Could you, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, Chair Ray. Could you walk through next steps again? So this doesn't come back till, is it June at a committee, the whole, is that right?
That's correct. So we're going to continue our meetings. We have the meeting with the environmental board tomorrow. Then we have Safety Services and Parks next week, but we're not really focusing on transportation in that meeting. We'll see if council has feedback that they want to offer, but that's not really the focus. So the next time that we're going to convene as a whole is at the Committee of the Whole meeting in June. At that point, each of the council committees will have had the opportunity to discuss their portion of the CIP, and then we'll bring all of those conversations back together in June at the Committee of the Whole.
And when this comes back to that, then could we make sure that if there's any substantial feedback from the environmental board, that that be highlighted? And, you know, this came after the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, so that way we can, as a council, consider it together?
Yes, absolutely. And it's just a function of timing that it wasn't included tonight. We didn't want to wait until next month's Mobility and Infrastructure Committee before we started talking to you about this. So certainly, their feedback will be incorporated in subsequent council materials.
Thank you. Any announcements? All right, then we're adjourned at 8:12. Thank you all. Good night.